Brad Urban called. Brad Urban. Brandon. Yeah, he told, he said he was gonna send you a request to have a close and he said he sent it that month. Right, Tammy got a, I think they gave her Tammy, so she can make a call. Yeah, she gave it to you.
We live?
Yeah, I seen it.
We live? We're live. Everyone, hopefully they can hear me. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to our council meeting that's scheduled for today, September fifteenth, twenty twenty. We need a communications check while we log on Facebook. Okay, communications check, do we have anyone on the teleconference line? No one on the teleconference line, okay. This meeting is closed to the public and we have limited members of county council, staff members, and the media in the room as long as, along with some employees in the room currently. Public access is provided live via video stream, which is on www.williamsburgcounty.se.gov, and also the Williamsburg County Facebook page, along with if you'd like to call in and listen, via telephone conference line is one eight seven seven three zero nine two zero seven three. Access number for that is five nine zero three eight zero five eight nine, the access number. So we are all good with our communications. We're gonna go ahead and call this regularly scheduled council meeting to order. I'm gonna ask that the invocation be given by Mr. Miller.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, a day that we've never seen before and one we'll never see again. We thank you for the ability to come together for county business. We ask from you, Heavenly Father, to guide our hearts and our minds that those things that we do tonight will be beneficial to the county, not only for tomorrow, but for the years and years to come. We ask you to guide our hearts and minds. We ask these best in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Congressman Miller. Our first order of business is our approval of minutes from the public hearing and regularly scheduled county council meeting that was held August eighteenth, twenty twenty. We need a motion for approval of the minutes.
Motion for approval, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. The next order of business is our annual Williamsburg County Audit Report for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. We have Ms. Robin Poston, our auditor here, she's with Harper Poston and Maureen P.A.
Fine, I'm gonna pass out an executive summary, which is a short, shorter presentation to look at than you've done the audit report. Good afternoon. I'm delighted to be here to present the audit for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. The fiscal year, June thirtieth nineteen crosses the period of July first, two thousand eighteen, and ends at June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. We've had two, basically, this is a combined administration audit report for basically the old administration and the new administrations involved in that twelve-month period. The financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen reflect that the government-wide financial statements, which includes the governmental activities and the business-type activities, both increased their financial position. The governmental funds increased the financial position by eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven ninety, and the business-type activities had an increase in financial position of three hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. The business-type activities include the Water and Sewer Fund and the Williamsburg County Transit System. The governmental activities includes the General Fund and all special revenue funds of the county. The total assets were sixty-two million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, of which forty million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand were capital assets. The others were other current assets, which includes cash, receivables, and other items. The deferred outflow of resources includes the deferred, those related to pensions and OPEB and the deferred loss on refunding, those totaled three point seven million dollars. The liabilities, the ones due within one year are five point eight million dollars. The ones that are due after one year are seventy-one point two million dollars, for total liabilities of seventy-seven million, thirteen thousand, two hundred and one dollars. Deferred inflows of resources is one point six million dollars, for a negative net position of twelve million, one forty-six, three oh three in the governmental-type activities. The largest liability for the governmental activities is the amount that is due for the pension fund. Now, the pension, the pension liability, we are required to disclose it as it is shown. However, it is not going to be due, no one's gonna come ask for that thirty million dollars that's due for the net pension liability. As long as the government or the county continues to pay the retirement contribution on the quarterly retirement reports, that's all you're required to pay. However, we have to disclose it in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The business-type activities, of course, includes the Water and Sewer Fund and the Transportation Authority. The total assets are fifty-two million dollars, of which forty-nine point one are basically the water and sewer distribution system, as well as the buses for the Transit Authority. The current assets are two point eight million dollars, which is based primarily of cash and receivables. The deferred outflow of resources is two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, of which, that's the deferred outflow of resources related to pensions and OPEB. The liabilities are totaled twenty-four point four million dollars. The vast majority of that is the long-term debt payments on the water and sewer system of twenty-three point seven million dollars, and other current liabilities of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. We also have deferred inflows of resources related to pensions and OPEB of a hundred and thirty-six thousand. The net pinch, the net position of the business-type activities is twenty-seven point six million dollars. The total revenues for the governmental activities, program revenues, and program revenues are charges for services, operating grants and capital grants totaled seven point five million dollars. The business-type activities had five point two million dollars. The program expenses for governmental activities is worth thirty point six million dollars, and as compared to the business-type activities, which had five point four million dollars in business-type activities. The net program revenue expenses were twenty-three, were negative twenty-three million dollars for the governmental activity. And what that number represents is the amount of funding that is required from general revenue sources to cover the expenses of the county. You had tax revenue of thirteen million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. You had local tax, hospitality tax of sixty-three point seven, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred. Local option sales tax of two point four million, capital project sales tax of two million, local governmental funds of one point three million, road wastes, solid waste fees of one point four million, road user fees of eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, landfill closure cost of four hundred and sixty-one thousand, state share taxes of one point eight million, and other revenue. You had a net increase in the net position of the governmental activities of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. The primary reason for the net increase is because your percentage of the net position of the net pension liability decreased during the year. The net pension liability is they take everybody in the entire state that's on the pension system. Your contributions to the pension, to the retirement system determines your proportionate share. That share can go up and down relative to other governmental entities, and so it's somewhat volatile how that calculation is done. And since it's done in a reear, so the June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen net pension liability is based on the June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen retirement report, there is, that's what, that's what the deferred inflows and outflows are because we are a year behind in the calculations. The business-type activities had net program revenues of a negative one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine oh nine. Now, that is, that represents what has to be paid from general revenues for the Water and Sewer Fund and the Transit Authority. We expect that number to be that much lower because the transit system and the water and sewer system should pay for itself by user fees. It shouldn't be, or user fees or grants, because that's how those systems are designed, as compared to governmental activities, which are basically, your tax dollars contribute a lot to funding those sources. So basically, the business-type activities increased the net position of three hundred and sixty thousand. The beginning net position was twenty-seven point two million, leaving the ending at twenty-seven point six million dollars. And that is the government-wide statements. And the government-wide statements include all the assets and all the liabilities. In other words, your capital assets are included and your, and all of your debt is recorded on those financial statements. The governmental, the governmental fund is the, basically, how you, before Gatsby thirty-four came into place is how you looked at the financial statements. And it is on the financial resources basis of, well, it's the financial resources of accounting terms in that you record items as they, as they become available. So the governmental funds, your general fund, which is the, basically, the largest governmental fund that you have, is the general fund. And the general fund is a, provides the percentage of its fund balance compared to your general governmental expenditures, that percentage was eleven percent. That, what that means is, which is, it is within the benchmark of okay. What that fund balance represents is your cushion for being able to fund unforeseen events. For instance, if we have a hurricane or something like that, it takes a while to get your money back and you have to expend some money before you get it back. So we like to have an adequate fund balance, certainly not too much, but an adequate fund balance to make sure that you can pay your expenses as they become due. Governmental entities are having to pay more and more costs related to fringe benefits. Over the past five to six years, the employer rate has increased from ten point six percent for South Carolina retirement to fourteen point five six percent. So every hundred dollars you, you know, you pay out in salaries, in salaries, you've also got fifteen dollars to pay out for the retirement system. That does not include the seven point six five percent match for FICA, nor does it include the health insurance premiums. So when you, when you hire an employee, you're not only adding that salary to the budget, you're also adding another fifty percent, basically. For the police officer retirement, the rate, the increase has been brought twelve point three percent to seventeen point two four percent. So it's a, this has been a major increase in retirement expense for counties that if they're not budgeted for, you, you're not budgeting the tax dollars to have the revenue to pay those. So those are one of the reasons that your expenses are increasing in governmental funds. If you, the governmental funds, in two thousand nineteen, you had tax dollars of sixteen point five million dollars as compared to sixteen point three in the prior year, slight increase. Your fees, fines, and licenses were basically pretty much the same as the prior year, about six million dollars. Your state aid and intergovernmental income was, revenues were seven point two million dollars, which were about eight hundred thousand dollars more than the prior year. Grant revenue is somewhat volatile in that, depending on which grants you get this year. Sometimes you'll have a grant that'll cover a five-year period, and when it drops off, you might see a drop, or, you know, because grants come and go as the funding sources award them. So that is somewhat of a volatile number. Your interest rental and other was one point six million. Other financing sources were thirteen point four million dollars. The largest part of that other financial sources and uses was the bond proceeds that you received, of thirteen point six million dollars. Your, in two thousand nineteen, your total government expenditures were thirty-nine point nine million dollars. There were thirty-three point six million dollars in two thousand eighteen. However, the largest increase was in the debt service, and you refunded a six million dollar loan. So basically, your expenses have not gone up six million dollars. You basically got proceeds from a loan last year that you paid back this year and refinanced. So that's where that number comes from. Your total increase in fund balance for the governmental, for the governmental funds were four point nine million dollars. The largest increase has to do, four point six million dollars of that increase was the capital project sales tax fund where bond proceeds has been recorded. The general fund had a decrease of one point eight million dollars. A large portion of that decrease came from transferring the funds that we had to back to the landfill fund. The landfill fund is, the landfill operations are now being maintained in the general fund. However, those special revenue fees collected for the, for closing the landfill and paying closure and post-closure cost, they are now back to a special revenue fund where they, where they can be separate from all the other governmental funds as we need to be able to track those more effectively. The, and so that's why that decreased. The debt service fund had an increase of four hundred and ninety-two thousand, and that really, that increase basically is just getting the revenue to come in so that when the debt payments are due in the fall, that the money will be there to pay those. The other governmental funds had a one point seven million dollars increase. The largest part of that number is the transfer back to the landfill fund from the general fund. So those kind of offset one another. So that is the, the debt of the county did increase by three point three million dollars over, over last year. The proprietary funds, basically, they, which is the water and sewer and, and the transit system, the proprietary funds are reported in the exact same way in the funds as they are in the government-wide statements. The reason is because they're on a full accounting resource method of accounting, and they're basically full accrual statements. The proprietary funds show their assets and they show their debt within their financial statements. So there's really no difference in these than the business activities which we've already discussed. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I have some observation, a couple, I believe. I jotted down somewhere. Yeah, question, from looking at what we've, what you've said and listening at you and looking at what this, we do have an adequate fund balance, that what you said, of eleven percent?
At this point, at June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, I don't know what you have now.
Okay, and eleven percent, and in your interpretation, that's...
That's on the low end of okay.
Okay, okay.
The state, and I'll say, and I'll tell you why, I ain't answering. The general fund in school districts, they're required to have ten percent. So, you know, that's why I'm saying that's on the low end of okay, okay?
Yeah, that's low, okay. And the other concern, I see you also detailed here that the county currently has sixty-five bank accounts included in the financial statement. Over and over, we have been bombarded with that concern, so many bank accounts. And we have been trying in the past, I know, to consolidate, but we've been having difficulties. I don't know if the people or some of the department heads deem to believe that most of those, or all of those accounts are actually necessary and maybe they've consolidated as much as they can. But would there be any way, and I know that's not your job, you can look and maybe see what accounts can be consolidated and which ones it would not be feasible to do?
My answer to that question is this. You have to understand what you have before you change it. In other words, we have had, this county has had so much volatility in the last ten years in the financial office with people coming and going, different finance directors and things like that. You've got to understand what you have and have a handle of reporting it correctly before you make major changes. You know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna add to your problems when you have it, as you're trying to fix the problems that are already there, okay? We can work with a number of bank accounts as long as everybody's getting all the information recorded. And that isn't very, it would be a very great, a great thing to consolidate some of those bank accounts. But let's wait until we got a handle on recording everything in a timely manner and then record that, and then address that issue.
Anyway, that's something we need to work on because that's been plaguing us year after year after year for umpteen years, and we are still being bombarded with the same thing again. So maybe whatever we need to do to get a handle on it, I think we need to start doing it now so that we can get this behind us.
Well, I think that that is a, I think that from my conversation with Liz and for, from, with Dr. Wright, is that you actually have some financial consultants in here now, and they're looking at helping you get your financial statements done for me when I come in to do the audit. And I think that they, you know, they will be able to, they will add some, their comments related to that as well as me. What happens is when I'm trying to do the audit, I'm trying to complete this task, and so I have so many things to do to get it complete. I don't have time to sit back and, and look at, well, what would be better? You know, it's just a different task that I've never had the time to do. I think that if the treasurer's office and the supervisor's office could get on the same general ledger system, it's at that point, then I think you'd have an opportunity to eliminate a lot of those bank accounts. Because they're basically on two different financial systems.
And so, you know, talking about those financial systems, again, you're saying, pretty much basically, that if we were to begin, and you use the word timely, you know, getting those financial statements together as soon as we have, say, expenditures, then we come back at the end of the month, then we need to be able to reconcile, that's what you're saying?
Correct. It needs to be, at this point in time, it should be live. In other words, you should be able to, you should be able to look at the general ledger on any given day and the cash balance should be correct.
So I just need to add something. We have met with the treasurer's office before COVID-nineteen to try to clean up some of the accounts, and I think we were able to maybe do a few of them that we had that were out there that we changed this year. But again, I welcome members of council to come in and sit with us on some of those meetings. That way, it's not, it's better understood as to what it is meant by having all of the bank accounts. Because I sat in a seat out there and I said, they got that many accounts? Well, now I'm in it, now I'm understanding why these things are having to be done, given the current systems we have in place. As far as with the financial, we wanted to do something this year, different to twenty twenty audit season because this is my complete audit. And we do have financial consultants that we are working with now that are gonna get us up to speed where we need to go. But it ain't gonna be one hundred percent perfect because it didn't happen this way overnight. So we are making some, some good changes. We've already met with all the departments that have, have staked in the county's auditing system and met with them with the financial advisors. Everyone has a checklist in which they are responsible for overseeing and getting done so that I believe in the next, hopefully, Robin will give us a thumbs up next time for the, for the audit season. So we are, it is a work in progress.
Any other questions? I'd like to say that I appreciate the opportunity to work on this engagement. I think that Williamsburg County has some wonderful people, and I've enjoyed working with Liz and Brenda and everyone, and Lane and everyone in the county. It's been a pleasure for me to deal with everything, everyone here, and that they are trying. I don't want you to think they're not. Eleanor, call me today with a question, and I am happy. And you don't get Bill when she calls me for questioning. So, but I do enjoy coming to Williamsburg County and working on this engagement, and I do appreciate the opportunity to serve this county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is, we don't have anything under ordinance, we don't have anything for third reading. However, we do have ordinance number, for second reading, ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty, an ordinance to amend the multi-park agreement for development of a joint county industrial and/or business park encompassing the property of Nanyang Plastic by and between Florence County and Williamsburg County, originally dated for January eleventh, twenty nineteen, and amended March fourteenth, nineteen ninety-five, is to provide each county with the discretion to determine its internal revenue allocation by ordinance as provided herein. We need a motion for second reading.
Some move, Madam Chair.
It has been properly moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your head. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We also have second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-one and ordinance authorizing the amendment of ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero seven, which is conveying the three point nine acres to the town of King Street to further permit conveyance of two adjacent lots located on Brook Street to the town of King Street, shown as Lot Two and Lot Three on a map prepared by Mr. Kevin Wilson, and it was dated February twenty-four. On the deed to be executed by the supervisor... uh, on the deed to be executed by the supervisor and attested by the clerk of counsel. We need a motion for second reading.
Some move.
It has been properly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. The next order of business is resolution, resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen, a resolu- uh, resolution authorizing the approval of all contractors and engineering agreements between Williamsburg County Complete Utilities LLC, AC, Schultz of Carolina and Caldwell Tanks Inc. and Coastcom Inc. and Eastern Engineer of South Carolina LLC for the Muzan Water Project.
Madam Supervisor, a motion to approve that ordinance. But before we do that, I would like for Mr. Lane to go, come up and please give us a a short summary of of what we're talking about. If that's okay with you.
Uh, you already, you have a motion on the floor, can we get a second? Discussion, obviously, come on, Mr. Lane. You guys speak up.
Hello? Okay, this project's been a long time in the making.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as you know, oh, I think we got the letter of conditions in two thousand sixteen from USDA. Of that, we had a certain portion of loan, uh, which was three point one million dollars and five hundred and two thousand dollar grant. Uh, when we took bids in December two thousand nineteen, we didn't have the funding to award contracts. We were, uh, about four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars short. So, we went back to USDA and explained to them what was going on, where where we were. And eight months later, here we are. Uh, they said that they could cover the additional overrun with the four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar grant. So that gets us to three point one million dollar original loan, the five hundred and two thousand dollar original grant, an additional four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar grant. Um, the heartburn I have with it, I know you don't wanna hear this, the three point one million dollar loan, that's over a forty-year period that we're gonna have to pay this back. I was just running some numbers earlier. You know, the revenue, if if we bring in, we got forty-seven customers, potential customers on this project. That's, you know, twenty-seven dollars a month, average bill, that's twelve hundred and sixty-nine dollars a month. The debt payment alone is gonna be over nine thousand dollars a month. We won't even have enough money to cover the debt payment, much less the power bill, the posters, the mail bills, the O and M of the system. Um, I know we'd all love to do this project, but I've just got my doubts on it at this time.
Excuse me, what what are those figures again? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the one, the amount of people that you said that sign up. Do you have more people live out there that just hasn't?
We we have thirty-six people that that live out there. We went out there and did a house check to see occupied houses, not just vacant houses, but these, an additional thirty-six occupied houses. Some of those may sign up. If they don't, you know, they got to pay the hundred and eighty dollar a year tax or water availability fee. So, that's another five hundred and forty dollars a month in revenue.
And you got forty, forty companies sign up?
Forty-seven.
I thought, I thought we had, uh, sixty-something that had signed up with, um, Lane with thirty-something refusing.
Forty-seven, yeah.
And that was all the respective ones?
It's all, it's all in the project, that's April Avenue.
Lane, you have to speak up just a little bit.
April Avenue, Lattimore Avenue, Lynchburg Road, Sierra Avenue, Sumter Highway, Topaz Avenue.
Right.
And Violet Avenue. You know, the bulk, the problem with this project, we don't have the infrastructure there now. So we've got the, of the tank. Tank bid was one point three million dollars. Uh, then we got, had to put in a well, that's eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. That's, that's the problem, you know, trying, trying to get our foot in that area so we can expand, you know, years from now, you know, and venture on out.
Well, then how how many, how many other potential houses that we have that just have not, um, committed? Because every time I go down that area, they're always bombarding me with, uh, where is the water, where is the water? How how many? It's a, it's some of them, Lane, like you said, they got to pay the user vi- availability fee anyhow. But how many others is it possible that we can get to add on to that forty-seven or whatever you said we got?
Well, that's thirty-six other houses that are occupied that haven't signed up yet.
Okay, I was thinking about the ones further on down, that said they had their deep well and stuff and they didn't want it. I didn't think that would do, but the ones over in in the Lattimore area and Topaz, uh, it, I think some people in that area hadn't signed up either, uh, Lane. Other than the, the thirty-something you talking about that's further on down, where those people said they have their own deep well and they didn't want the water. And since that time, a lot of them have called us, well, we want the water now. So, it's a potential there that we can get some of those people as well.
Well, the potential's always there, yeah.
Yeah.
How many people would you need to be on to, for it to really work?
I would like for the revenue generated from the water bills, you know, just the twenty-seven dollars a month, that's not profit by any means.
Right.
But I would like for at least the revenue to cover the monthly debt service payment. Nine thousand dollars.
And what did, what did you figure out the, uh, bills? How much would, would you charge to be able to get that, to cover that? How much would you have to charge?
I'd, I'd have to do the math, forty-seven and figure the other thirty-six people do connect, you know, divided by the, oh, ninety-three fifty-nine a month. A hundred, you know, roughly, almost a hundred. How many people would you need? How many people would you need to sign up?
About three hundred.
That's something, I would have to run the math. But the problem is, there's not enough people out there to cover. Somebody goes out there and puts in a massive subdivision. But I mean, I would just, what, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, whatever.
Lane, I just didn't know, didn't realize, understand it to be that lopsided. If it did, oh, we did our feasibility study and stuff, that would have kicked that out. So, well, it's, it's not feasible to even do a project down here. How did we get to this point? Because when we were going out there.
I don't know.
Something wrong, Lane, something wrong with the numbers of Liz.
I don't know, I mean, USDA ran the numbers, like you say, in the feasibility study. They looked at what was provided from our engineer. And they basically came here in two thousand sixteen and presented y'all with the letter of conditions. Said this is a doable project.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do it? Y'all all voted on it to move forward with it. And then we got, you know, down the road and 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 bid the project and got the official numbers.
Okay.
No one else out there in that area that we can contract with to serve that area?
The town of King Street, we, the part of this project includes a tie-in with their system. But the problem that they have is they can't provide the fire protection because it's so far away. Uh, they could provide the drinking order possibly, but they won't have the, you know, the minimum pressure on the fire hydrants and flow.
They can, the pressure won't be there?
No.
Well, we've considered a Barano Water System?
Um, we just went through an incident with a Barano Water System earlier this week where they were looking at applying for a grant to extend their lines and they don't have all their financial stuff in order either to even qualify for grants at this point.
But see, it put us in a kind of a precarious position because we have told those people everything was in place to get water there to them. USDA has come through what they were supposed to do and everything was in, online to 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 come through. I wish the engineers and stuff was here so they could explain. Cause I still think this is a doable project, uh, Lane, but from, from what I'm hearing from you, it doesn't make sense. But, uh, I think there's something else in there that I'm missing, I believe.
It, it doesn't make sense at this time. And I know the goal is to get in that area and expand on that area. But we don't know what kind of funding is coming down two or three years later to extend this and go on down the road and pick up another hundred customers, we, we just don't know.
Yeah.
There's a lot of unknowns right now.
But I don't know what the answer is, y'all, Lane.
So, in general, Lane, I think we're also hearing that we probably, and we will go ahead and do a complete water feasibility study for the entire county. And that's because the system is supposed to pay for itself.
We just heard that.
And I think, huh?
We just heard that from.
Right, um, and we, we talked about it before all this stuff happened to try to get a study done because we need to see where we are fiscally with our water projects to make sure to see if we do need to do some slight increases in our water bill to help sustain the system. Um, much like with King Street and I believe Mr. Um, Mr. Lee, I think Hemingway just went up on their water bill as well. I think, I'm not sure, but, um.
Did you, y'all go up on your water bill?
Yeah, yeah, of course, you know, USDA says, look, you're gonna have to, they just get back and you're gonna have to go up.
Right.
So they had to go up, yeah.
And it is part of the, um, the, uh, the grant requirement that we were supposed to go up incrementally every year, if I'm not mistaken, or the loan requirement. And we've never done a, a major increase in this county.
Not since two thousand eleven.
Since two thousand eleven, but we did go up in the, um, the prison. We did increase their water usage fee.
A little bit.
So, yeah.
What is the water usage fee now?
Um, we'd have to pull the numbers for you, Councilman, we can do that.
The, you're talking about the rate now?
Right.
What was the average?
Oh, twenty-two seventy-five for the first three thousand gallons and an additional three ninety-five per thousand gallons for anything over the first three thousand. And that's, that's what it's been since two thousand eleven.
But when you did that, you, you were, you were doing it based on twenty-seven dollars?
Well, twenty-seven is what the average customer pays. You know, we have right now twenty-nine hundred customers and we're doing average residential payment, what their bill is, is twenty-seven dollars. Twenty-seven oh four, to be exact.
We do that, uh, county-wide feasibility study, it's almost inevitable that we're gonna have to go up on our rates. And 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 I just feel bad because this is in my district too. We've already gotten out there and we've, we've made commitments. We've done engineering studies and so forth. I think we need to give it a try. And if, uh, we have to go up on the rates eventually, we'll do that and let's see how it goes. Because no, no, we have water systems now, I think, areas that's not independent of themselves. So it's gonna take, uh, collaboration of all, all of the, the, the total county water system. Some district may have to bear some of the burden of the other. But when it all come together, they must be, should be self-supporting or self-sufficient. Um, but I think we need to give this a try. Those citizens deserve good drinking water and they, they are adamant about getting water too. So I think we need to give it a try. But if it runs us in the hole, we need to go back to the drawing board and see what we need to do.
So, um, at this point, we do have a motion on the floor, we have a second. And we have any other discussion?
Your recog, uh, yeah, oh, Madam Supervisor, your recommendation from the water superintendent, Mr. Nick Mixon, is, is, is what? I want to be clear cut, what his recommendation for this water system now to proceed is what?
I'm, I can't recommend it based on the numbers. Uh, I mean, I, I would love for the project to happen. If it was a lot more grant involved, I'd say, yeah, let's go for it. But just running the numbers is, is not feasible.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, are we ready to vote? Call the question, um, all in favor for, uh, resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen?
Madam Supervisor, before you make that vote again.
Yeah.
Please, please explain to us again what we're voting for? Because, because, I mean, he's sitting here telling us he doesn't think we should do it. And we're gonna still go ahead and vote to try to do it? I'm, I'm, I'm confused.
Well, if he's telling, I, I can't make the decision for council, I still have to carry the whole order out. And if you all decide nay, you vote nay, and if you decide yay, then you vote yay. But it's already, it's already on the floor, it's already in second, and I gotta carry it through. So what you would be voting on is basically giving me the authority to sign off on the contract to have this done, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Say that again now?
You would be basically giving me authorization to sign the contract to have this done, to have the water project starting and implemented.
Right, but, I mean, but even if, I, I, I just don't see how we, you know, and I, and I understand we have it on the floor. But, I mean, if he's telling us it's not something that we can do, which we know we wanna do it. But, you know, is there something else that we can do to perhaps help us along to get him that reassurance to say yes before we say, okay, go ahead, Madam Supervisor, and do that? Or, you know, is, are, is there any other avenue that we can take? Is what I'm asking.
So he has perceived, um, every grant opportunity available to him to have it done, mostly grant versus, um, loan. At this point, I, I'm working, I work at the pleasure of what council decide. He's presented the information, at that point, it's up for council to tell me what to do.
Madam Supervisor, if, if we at this point vote on it and it comes out nay, does that mean that kills the whole thing or can we come back later and research this and again vote, vote on it?
You can, at this point, either table it into the next meeting. But once I sign the contract, there ain't no turning back.
Right.
So we can, I'm sorry, could we, we, you said we can table it?
Can table it till the next council meeting scheduled in October.
Point, point. Lane, approximately how much money we've already invested in this project up to this point? Cause we going halfway across the lake and now we gonna just stop and draw. And there, there, I think there are avenues to do this. I don't say rush into it, take your time, go on a table to find. But we've committed and we've spent a lot of engineering fees, money, we've spent money, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, that's, in essence, is throwing away hundreds of thousands of dollars and just say, the heck with it. The time to have done this would have been early on. When we, we agreed to do this, we had meetings and yeah, 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 yeah. Now, when it get to the point where it's gonna be a little problem, we can all just step down. If we wanna table it, fine, but let's explore other avenues, perhaps go back and try to get some other people to sign up. Let them know how important it is that they sign up because if they do not sign up, it's a good possibility that this project will not go. And it's gonna be their fault. And if they decide in that community, no, we ain't gonna sign up, let it project go, well, then we just lost. That's, that's my take on it. I just hate to have spent so much, the taxpayers' money, and now we're gonna abandon the project. That's kinda like that nuclear plant. Just abandon it and lose money.
Well, that, that would be, that would be the same thing as if we were to vote no. And so, I, I think tonight would be the best thing for us to do would be to table it.
Well, that's what I just said.
And give them an opportunity to do it before we vote no. Because the main objective we wanna do is make sure that those citizens get that water.
That's what I said, Tara, that's right. If we wanna table it, that's fine. But we need to find out if there are other avenues we can explore to see can we make this come to fruition. Because we have committed up to this point. And we've spent money, plenty money up to this point. So, that's just my take on it. If, if we wanna table it, that's fine. And we need to see what we can do and I can talk to some of the citizens out there and let them know the importance of, of getting signed up. If you want it, show us.
May I also add?
Even if you voted no on it, you could still bring it back up.
There is a, I just need to caution you all, the longer we make the engineers wait, the more money that's gonna be. Because trust me, they're gonna be in my office looking for their money, whether we do the project or not. Am I correct, Lane?
Let me ask you.
That's right.
Hello, I heard you threw out a number that is not feasible, and the amount that it probably would take for a person to pay their bill, it would be probably the ninety-dollar amount or something like that. I don't feel like any of them could be able, or would be willing to pay that amount. Now, if it would go with that, how you gonna make up those extra funds to pay that bill?
Let me, let me just, and I'm just speaking, because that's one of my people, is that when we look at a feasibility study, trust me, the thing we don't wanna do is go up an enormous amount on the citizens because that's not what they're gonna be able to pay for, you're right. I think he mentioned for that, for that particular area, if they were the only ones on a water system, am I correct? You correct me if I'm wrong, but if they're the only ones on a water system, then it would be like ninety dollars plus. But when we look at it countywide, there may be some areas that may create an over, I don't know, because the study has not been done yet, there may be some areas that may have an overage, there may be some areas that may be a little under. It's gonna be with the average rate to cover the current debt, including this one, that we'd have to pay, if I'm not mistaken. Cut in if you need to.
Yeah, the entire county would be a burden.
I'm asking, I guess, getting back down to, if you don't get any more to sign up, and it would come out to be like ninety-something dollars for a person to pay, uh, at that rate. I know no one would be able to just do that. Then what you do, you will come back and spread it all over the whole county water system to.
Well, I think one of the first things we need to do is go look for more money, you know, more grant money, not loan, but grant money. You know, we go back to USDA, we go to RIA with the state, we go to CDBG, and see if we can try to bring in some more grant funding for the project to make it happen. You know, I mean, we're talking, the word abandoning was used, we're not abandoning anything. We're just putting it on hold until we have the funding in place to do it.
But Lane, what's puzzling me, we're not talking about funding, we're talking about funding, yeah, but we're talking the sustainability of this project. To have them, enough people, enough people online, or resources in place, to have a monthly cash flow that will cover the indebtedness or the expenses of the water system. I don't think it's a matter of getting more money to do the project, as you just said, USDA gave us the four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars, so getting the project done is done, a done deal. The thing is sustainability of income coming from these things. Either get more residents to sign on, or something, find some other alternative. That's your question, and Andy, to answer your question, they will not, none of them would have to pay ninety-something dollars a month if you spread it out over the whole county, do an assessment of the entire water system in the county, then divide that by the people, and that would give you the amount of money. Now, there's no doubt about it, we need to go up on our water rates, they're too low, probably some of the lowest in the state. And this probably would be an opportunity to do that, but you won't know what you can do until, like the supervisor said, they go and do a study, a feasibility study of the water system, and not the Mazon Water System, the entire Williamsburg County Water System, then we can determine whether they'll be able to pay it or not. That's where we stand right now, and I agree with that, and it's no problem. In fact, I don't wanna say I table it, let me tell you why I don't wanna say I table it, now I'll be real candid with you. I don't want the people in Mazon to say, well, see, you put it on hold. No. I would rather someone else do it, but if you don't do it, then I'll do it, because that makes sense, Lane, it makes sense. So, that's where we are at this point.
Well, hold on, if we decide to do that, make sure we back out of where we already done the initial motion and the second, and we have to start this process over again.
Okay, we have to.
Yeah, the discussion?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, I would like to rescind that motion.
Okay. Rescind it? I'm going to call it the question again, in reference to resolution two-zero-two-zero-one-three. And obviously, I've already read that resolution. We need a, we need a motion.
Madam Supervisor, I'd like to make the motion that we table this resolution until we give Mr. Nixon an opportunity to do some more studying and do some more groundwork, and then we'll come back and look at it again.
Have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of tabling this upon additional information being presented to council, please raise your hand. Those, those opposers the same? The ayes have it, the motion is carried to table this. Moving along, thank you. Proclamation that's designating the week beginning September thirteenth as National Direct Support Professional Recognition Week. I believe the proclamation is in the packet. You all have the opportunity to look that over. We just need a motion to, and for, to recognize this week as the National Direct Support Professional Recognition Week.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this proclamation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers the same? The ayes have it. The next order of business is the supervisor's report, and we're doing an update on the COVID- nineteen, uh, Williamsburg County's COVID- nineteen information. I thought Mr. Jenkinson, he already left?
Who?
Mr. Billy. Billy, he just out here? Okay, we're gonna kinda hold on the COVID- nineteen, and I'm gonna ask, I'm so busy looking at you over there. If you will, just come on up and give us an update on the bond.
I bear good news tonight about our bond refinancing. In two thousand and ten, we borrowed thirty million dollars to build this building, our jail, our E-nine-one-one facility, and remodel our courthouse. It's a fabulous project. And we have another significant opportunity. The current balance on the thirty-million-dollar loan obligation is slightly over twenty-six million dollars. And our bond counsel has advised that, given the low interest rates right now, most likely we can save a million dollars on this transaction and what we're doing. Now, several pieces of it. Today, we learned, what you do with the bond issue is complicated, is a number of steps you go through. And one of the steps is you must have a meeting with Standard and Poor's in New York, who did it by phone, and they rate the county's financing ability funded. An A rating means you're really good, it's like an A on your report card, an A minus is excellent. And as it goes down, in the past, we've made, back in nineteen ninety, we had no rating, zero. And we were paying huge interest rates. Today, we were pleased to receive Standard and Poor's rating for the county is A. And for purposes of this transaction, A minus, which is exactly what we received in two thousand and ten. So, that set the stage for a bond issue. In other words, when you go on the street, as it's called, and you put together a prospectus and sell these bonds, it makes it a very attractive package, not only from a lender perspective, but from a purchaser and investor perspective. Now, so what we, you need to know, say, okay, well, how's this? What's the timeline? I asked today for a brief timeline, we've already gone through many timelines. But what we have right now is publishing the bond issue next week. That is a document detailing, it's a thick magazine, in effect, about Williamsburg County. They wanna know who our supervisor, we had to provide her, we had Ms. Nelson, we had industrial prospects, and what we're doing as a county, and they wanted to know about education. It is a complete book on Williamsburg County that a prospective purchaser would look at and say, hey, this is a good deal, I like what I see. Standard and Poor's loved it, it was a very productive conversation. I don't know if we tell them about those things, but they wanted to know about, what are the industries here? We told them about DSM, we told them about Valley Forge Schlag, we told them about, I'm not a syntheticist, we told them about trucking ware, we told them about these other industries like those which are sustainable industry. Nanyah, for example, these are not sowing plants, or some plant is, you know, gonna be here today and gone tomorrow. These are very solid businesses, so it went over real well. So, the D O S will be published next week, the bond issue is then priced, and the pricing will take place on October first. And then it will close, the actual bond issue will close the transaction on October twenty-ninth, about a month and a half away. And the actual payoff, once it closes, the money's in hand, they will pay off the two thousand and ten bonds on one December. That's the plan. Now, there was one other thing that popped up on my radar screen, and it does it daily. This is, I'm just giving you today's report so far. Yesterday, I received from our bond counsel, a engagement letter from Piper Sandler, which I need, I suppose, send in today. That, this is the engagement for the underwriters. It's the underwriter engagement letter, when I looked down on the first page, and if I may, I'm just gonna ask you to pass these in two directions, and so you'll understand what we have here. This is the engagement letter, really the first page, tells a lot. Now, when I got it, I looked down on the first page, and I saw the underwriter discount, one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. I said, holy cow, what is that? What is the discount? Is that a fee, or is this exactly what it is? Somebody getting that kind of money, and then over to the side, expenses of five thousand six fifty-five. That's not much money in the grand scheme of what all is going on here. So I called bond counsel, and I said, give me a little heads up, so when I present this letter, I understand and they understand what this is. Tell me about this one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars, when do we have to pay that? And they said, over the next twenty years. I said, okay, tell me how it works. Every year, we will sell one-twentieth of these bonds, and they'll be negotiated and cashed in, all the way down to the last one. Now, as you progress, the value of the bonds is much higher because you got the accumulation of the interest and whatever. So, it's a sliding scale, but the total of that sliding scale, paid over twenty years, is one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars, based upon takedowns, as it's called in that previous paragraph, of up to six dollars and twenty-five cents. Brian Newrick said, this company is so good, this Piper Sandler, he said, I'll tell you straight up, if they'd have said seven dollars and fifty cents, I'd have said yeah. He said, for whatever reason, people like Williamsburg County, they feel like doing something for us. And this reflects a reduced price, and the expenses, or the upfront expenses, which are itemized there, he said, very reasonable, given this market. And I would recommend that the supervisor sign this letter. I wanna head and had her sign it, just in case I had to send it today, I do need to send it tomorrow, but I just think it would be appropriate if somebody would move, make a motion authorizing the supervisor to sign the Piper Sandler engagement letter, for the reasons I have explained.
So, Madam Supervisor?
Questions?
And are there any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to allow me to sign the contract with Piper and Sandler regarding our engagement letter, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers the same? The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Those are the ayes, I have, Madam Supervisor, thank you.
Thank you. I do like to thank, this was a tedious task, and I'd like to thank our financial advisors, Mr. Larry Finney, Brian Newrick, Franny Heiser, Mr. Jenkinson, as well as Liz Nelson, and the tax team, the treasurer's office, Ms. Kimber Cooper, as well as the auditor's office, Ms. Crystal Powell, as well as, I believe, our collector's office. All worked extremely hard on trying to pull together all the information that was gonna be needed for us to secure this funding source. So, kudos to Williamsburg County team, as well as our outside team for providing assistance to us, so I thank them. The next order of business is, we're gonna discuss some of the COVID- nineteen updates. I just wanted to advise all of our citizens, advise that our ordinance is still in effect for our mask ordinance. I'm glad to see that our numbers are decreasing, I like to think that some of that's in regard to the fact that we are all practicing the proper practicing methods to keep each other safe. We have mobile testing tomorrow, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, from seven-thirty a.m. to ten-thirty a.m. It's gonna be held at the King Street Recreation Facility. The sponsors of it will be the Williamsburg County Regional Hospital and DHEC. So try to get out there and get your testing done. County government is still operating on limited access to the building. However, there's methods of payment via email, via internet, via telephone, as well as the drop boxes that are located outside the facility. So you can still pay your bills. As some of you know, that some of the paperwork around your home that went out from Williamsburg County Government, we are still trying to make any concessions we can for our citizens to make payments and talk to people about some of the issues they're facing out there regarding delinquent taxes. So, one of the other critical things that I'm gonna ask council for their help is that we are in danger for this census season. Our turnout in Williamsburg County is less than what we can ever imagine. We have probably roughly about forty-seven, forty-seven or so percent of people that are reporting in census. This is going to cost us a lot over the next ten years. As it has, it's tied into, grants is tied into different funding sources that we're able to get, it's just tied into services that we are able to receive in our county. And if those numbers reflect a negative, an extreme negative amount of people that are actually here in Williamsburg County, then that's gonna affect our revenue and how, what the survivability is to Williamsburg County. So we are reminding citizens, a few things that we need them to do, because they are census workers out there working. Please, place the numbers on your houses, and also place them on your mailbox post, if your mailbox post is further at least fifty feet from your house. They need to be at least four inches in size and reflective. So, there is a state law that tells us that you must have this just by virtue of state law, and you could be fined for not having that. With that being said, we just want our citizens to ensure that we are able to capture your addresses while they're out there trying to get your census information. Also, citizens, if you have a sign, because they will leave something on your door if they came and you were not there, call them. The information that you are reporting to the census bureau has nothing to do with affecting any money you receive in terms of your personal income, it has nothing to do with any benefits you receive. We just need you to get counted. If you have issues, and we have been pushing this out as best we can with county government, but county council members, I'm gonna need your help to go to your districts, talk to your folks, let them know that we've got to get counted, because if we don't get counted, then we are gonna suffer a long ten-year, basically nine to ten years before they start counting again, effects of it. It will affect your council voting districts significantly as well, because they're gonna have to re- because they're gonna have to re-proportion the county according to what the population looks like. So that, you don't want to see that. So we just need people to just get signed up, get counted. Also, there are some, there are things that they're working through in voter registration to try to help with easing some of the tension, but it has not been approved yet. But we are hoping, hoping, again, it has not been approved yet, that they may be able to start voting as early as the last week in the month. So stay tuned for more information on that as well as any other additional census information that's coming up. This is, so that's all I have for my report. Moving along, we have nothing for executive session. Members of council, do you all have anything non-votable related that you want to discuss or any announcements you choose to make at this point? Hearing none. We need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers the same? The motion is carried. Thank you all and have a great evening and be safe.